Good evening and welcome to the Corder Madera Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. And Adam, will you please call the role?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Chairman Chase. I'll start with Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
That's great. Okay, so at the beginning of every meeting, we have the public comment time that is time available for anyone to comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight. If you have something that you would like to speak to, you have three minutes to do so. And that public open time starts now. So you can send in a public comment. Tracy, that email address is?
It's publiccomment@tcnmail.org.
Great. So you have that opportunity. Do you see any hands raised at this time?
Um, I do not.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and close public comments section since it seems that there are not. So we'll move directly to our intended business for tonight. And that is a preliminary review of a proposed 149 room residence in by Marriott Hotel, including extended stay rooms for longer term stays. A lot can be said about this tonight, but I won't. So we can go directly to staff to make their presentation for this.
Thank you, Chairman Chase and Commissioners and members of the public. As you are aware, tonight is a preliminary review of this proposal by Renescent Hotels Incorporated. The, as I always say, when we, when we have these meetings, we sometimes call them study sessions. We sometimes call them workshops. But I want to make it abundantly clear to everybody listening this evening that the planning commission is not giving any, taking any actions this evening. This is really an opportunity for the commission, the applicant to speak to the commission and members of the public, really to get an early look at some of the conceptual plans and proposals from the applicant at this early stage in the process and get some preliminary feedback from the commission here, public comment, so that they can provide, that you can provide some direction to them as they embark upon what the next step would be, would be putting together a formal application that would be submitted to the planning department. And then after that would follow the normal rules, sorry, the normal process of staff level review, environmental review and whatnot, and then coming back to the planning commission for formal hearing. So again, it's, we are at an early stage of sort of reviewing this project at this time. The intention tonight is that staff will give just a real overview, 10 to 15 minutes. I'm trying to provide right now, just a little, make it very clear, abundantly clear what the purpose of the meeting is again. And Sean will provide, I'll introduce Sean and then the applicant. This is really an opportunity for the applicant to present the preliminary plans and concepts and to really engage in a informal discussion about the direction of the project at this time and given the information available at this time. One of the things I did want to know is that, as we'll see tonight, and Sean will get into this a little bit. Obviously, this is following on the heels really of, not only was there a prior proposal for a hotel at this site, as many in the community and many of the commissioners are aware of. But there was also a hotel bonus ordinance that was staff developed with the planning commission and the town council and ultimately adopted in June of 2020 and which this proposal intends to really follow closely and adhere to. So we'll get into that. There may be a lot of questions about some of those rules if you're not familiar with it, but obviously I believe all of the commissioners are, well, for, with the exception of Commissioner Rizzo, were on the commission in May when this was actually adopted. And I believe actually Commissioner Rizzo, you were as well, if I'm remembering correctly. So, so good. All of you are aware of that bonus ordinance is that's central to this proposal. So I'm going to, you know, Sean Kennings is going to be working as a contract planner for us on this proposal. You, many of you know Sean. Sean has worked for the town before. Sean is a, is a town resident in his family. But more importantly, you know, Sean has worked on past applications, the Marin Montessori school expansion and zoning change was a project that he was a contract planner on. And he also was hired by the town to help with the, the town's cannabis ordinance. So a couple of projects and Sean's a familiar face for many of you. So happy to have Sean helping with this project. And I will turn it over to Sean for the rest of the staff portion of the presentation and then we'll get into the applicant's presentation.
Adam, Chair Chase, members of the commission, I'm Sean Kennings, planning consultant with LAK Associates. I'm assuming you can all see the screen. The PowerPoint that we put together, as Adam explained, this is the preliminary project review, concept review as, as it pertains to the hotel FAR bonus. The site itself is a five and a half acre site, most of you are familiar with, at the corner of Madera and Tamil Vista, adjacent to Highway 101, north of the town center. It's a mixed use commercial general planning district with an MX1 mixed use Tamil Vista corridor district zoning. There was a typo in the staff report. It is MX1, not C3. Currently, it's a 110 room hotel, the Best Western, is a restaurant, a pool, 188 parking, 188 parking spaces. And most notably, a flood control lagoon, 0.64 acres, the northeast corner. Just real quickly, the previous project was submitted in 2014 by the same applicant. It required general plan and zoning ordinance amendments, most specifically to increase, increase the floor area from 0.34 to 0.55. FAR needed to re-designate the land use designations from highway commercial to a new C5 motel hotel commercial district. The project was evaluated pursuant to CEQA, and the IR was conducted, prepared. There was no formal approval or confirmation of the project as there were many concerns regarding several iterations of the project, including concerns about pond mitigation measures, the scale of the project, amassing in the architecture. And all the information related to that project is located on the town's website. And as you can see on this slide, a majority of that pond was, was proposed to be filled in. The current proposal right now takes into account the pond. It's a new 149 room hotel, approximately 119,000 square feet, a maximum of four stories here on the east side of the, of the property with three stories as closer to Tamil Vista. As 160 parking spaces located around the perimeter, the landscaping plan. Additionally, the hotel includes measures to meet the town's hotel FAR bonus specifically for aesthetics, enhanced sustainability, community integration, the public realm. Other things included breakfast, outdoor spaces, a pool, a bar, a snack area, a fitness center, bicycle program, shuttle, and onsite laundry. The property, the project will have existing access in the same location, same general location off Madera with orientations towards Mount Tam, higher, higher elevations, again, along Highway 101. This project also includes enhancements to the pond with landscape pathways. And as Adam explained, the applicant will go into more detail about the design, the site plan. Specific to this project was the passing of the hotel FAR bonus ordinance last summer, which allows throughout the town, four locations, four hotel bonuses. One of the issues that requires, one of the criteria for getting the bonus requires the applicant to hold a community meeting and then a preliminary hearing at the planning commission, which is tonight's hearing. They had the community meeting in October of 2020. Specifically, again, you have to meet those four findings for design, environmental sustainability, community integration, and the public realm. If you make those findings, you can get up to a 0.70 FAR bonus and up to a 47 foot height maximum. So tonight, we're going to go through some of these preliminary concepts. Ultimately, the planning commission has to approve the designer view and the use permit for this as well as the FAR bonus. And the applicant's proposal of the 0.36 total points you can request. The applicant is requesting 0.29, although they only need 0.24 for the total. I'll briefly go through these. Again, the applicant will, will spend more time explaining how they feel like this project meets a bonus requirement. Architecture and design, does the, does the project meet the town's aesthetics, is it integrating with, with the natural features in the community? At large, how does it respond to the site and, and other developments? Again, we're going to let the applicant sort of speak to that. They're asking for point, point 12 FAR, 12 points, and they believe their project meets those 12 points. Environmental sustainability, maximum of 0.12 FAR. Does the project incorporate quantifiable environmental sustainability measures? Code requirements, maximizing, minimizing, minimizing energy and water use, solid waste, greenhouse gas emissions. The applicant has a CalGreen Tier One compliance plan. They're bringing in a professional CalGreen consultant to, to ensure that the formal application meets the standard. They're also going to provide some additional voluntary options, including solar panels, gray water reuse, bike share, and local shuttle. So of the, of the 12 total points, they're, they're proposing eight in compliance. Community integration. This is opportunities for community spaces, including meeting rooms, outdoor and indoor spaces. The applicant is proposing allowing meeting rooms available certain times during the year. This would be in their proposal, a for-profit consideration, although they would, they would work with the town as to how that is scheduled and when those, those meeting rooms are available. We mentioned the pond. They are proposing to enhance the pond, remove non-native ground covers and species to enhance that the pond to improve habitat diversity, diversity, improve water quality. And then they're providing a landscape area with seating adjacent to the pond. They also have a biologist, I believe, here tonight to speak to some of those, some of those points. Of the, of the nine points, I believe they've got three for the interior space, three for the habitat creation. They also discussed having an emergency response resource center consistent with the criteria for Red Cross. However, Red Cross has an established center at the Marin County Civic Center. And they don't quite have facilities like this dedicated in the event that whatever the disaster is, you know, they have to have it sort of localized or specific to, to the event. And the applicant again will speak to that. So although they are proposing to include this as a disaster recovery center, the Red Cross will not quite accept it. So they're not including that as a, as a certified point request. So for community integration, it's only six points. Then the last one is the public realm, a total of six points. Excuse me, sorry. Kids at home, excuse me. The public realm, six points, they're proposing to dedicate a 15 foot wide frontage along Tamil Vista for improved landscape improvements, including undergrounding some utilities, providing a wider sidewalk and generous landscaping. So in total, staff has not done a sort of deep dive into whether or not the project meets the merits of the FAR bonus. We've not done a deep dive into the MX1 zoning district to make sure that the project complies. That will be part of the formal application. But as you can see here, here are the available points. Those are the requested points. And the project, if you were to subtract the pond area, what the FAR calculation, they would need a maximum of 0.58 FAR, which is 0.24 over the base. So they, they've built in a little bit of wiggle room. Again, this project's already had its community meeting in October of 2020. It will continue to have neighborhood outreach and public noticing in accordance with the formal application process. And we will definitely be reviewing this project with regards to CEQA. The town will seek a qualified professional to prepare the appropriate document. And the town and, and individuals be noticed in accordance with those requirements. So to sum up my presentation again, staff is looking for the commission to provide direction and concept on, on the conceptual design. Is the project design appropriate? Does the massing height material choices, the site design? Do these meet the criteria of the FAR bonus? Need comments on the criteria themselves? Do some things feel like they're asking for too much or too little? Do they have opportunities for additional FAR bonus criteria? And then in general, just comments and feedback for the applicant for their formal project. And with that, I'll end my presentation. You can ask me questions specific to that, or we can wait until the applicant's presentation and come back and answer questions.
And if I may, I just wanted to add one quick thing. Also, I should have mentioned, Sean, you also worked on and were the project planner for the Evergreen Budget In redevelopment as well. So some hotel, Corder Madera hotel experience as well. One of the reasons, Commissioners, why we're also so focused on this bonus FAR and these, the different set of criteria, the four different categories that Sean just went over, you know, the, the, the the actual code itself, when we, when we wrote the hotel bonus ordinance, which, which is now embedded in the zoning code under the MX1 district. We did specifically mention that an applicant, it's, it's in 1813040C2. An applicant seeking to utilize the provisions described in this section shall submit an application for preliminary review with the planning department. And the applicant's project shall require a minimum of one public hearing at a study session before the planning commission. A primary purpose of the study session, session shall be to preliminarily evaluate the proposed project in light of the additional FAR requested, consistent with the findings and additional FAR assignment schedule described in this section. So Sean just went over what that additional FAR assignment schedule is and, and therefore also what one of the primary purposes of tonight's meeting is about for the commission. You know, and just in general, I know one of the other things is, I think, one of the purposes, if you go back to why we created the hotel bonus ordinance, was to really create the, the criteria and really the requirements and the conditions under which the town would potentially allow for or permit more FAR than the base 0.3 FAR, sorry, 0.34 FAR, which is allowed today. So going above that, under what conditions would the town actually permit that? And the ordinance that Sean has gone over and that we just talked about really was adopted to sort of lay the, the groundwork and provide really the roadmap for applicants to, to come to the town with so that they could actually say, hey, you know, this is what the town wants. We're trying to meet that. And that's the conversation we, we're having tonight. So from staff's perspective, and I think it's exciting to see somebody now take an ordinance that we developed in sort of, you know, from a policy standpoint and now putting it into practice. And for the community members, this is the first and Commissioners, obviously, this is the first applicant we've had under this newly adopted ordinance. So you know, there may be questions about it. We're happy as staff to sort of talk about it a little bit. Not everybody on the call, I'm sure, was involved, deeply involved as, as the rest of us were in this hotel ordinance. But it is key to sort of now what the applicant is, is bringing to the, to the commission this evening. And, and like Sean said, we're, you know, we want to give the applicant, I know has a fairly lengthy presentation. So if you'd rather just get right to it, that's fine too. But we're also happy to take questions on the staff portion of the presentation right now.
Thank you, Adam. I think that being that there will be a lengthy presentation, I'm just going to run through the Commissioners and see if they have any questions for yourself or for Sean. So Commissioner Bendel, do you have any questions for?
Clarification because I missed it. I was trying to write it down. Currently, there are 110 rooms and how many parking spaces?
188, I think.
88?
188.
Okay. And what's being proposed is 160 parking spaces. Is that right? 149 rooms and 160 parking spaces.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for the staff? No questions. All right, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions?
I was wondering if there was any notes from the community outreach meeting, any comments from, or concerns that came from the community meeting?
I would, you know, I'm happy to respond and I think the applicant can also talk about it. So the community meeting was intended, and it's written this way in the ordinance, that it was really sponsored and run by the applicant. Because of COVID, we ended up having them use our platform, but it was run and managed by them. I, you know, there were, there were several, it was the first time sort of the applicant had, Renescent Hotels had discussed the fact that they were going to retain the, the pond in its entirety and improve its habitat. I think that drew a lot of positive comments from the, the community members that were on the call. I think that's fair to say. And there was relatively little about other aspects of the project, other than there was a, I think, a really good discussion by the architects about how they were going to approach the site and the design of the project. But most significantly, I think a lot of enthusiasm and excitement over the retention of the pond because that was obviously a very significant area of concern more than three years ago, you know, when, when this project was discontinued. Or the, the prior project was discontinued.
And the only other question I had was, the, the Ameritrade building, is, is that owned by the hotel group or is that a separate ownership?
It's a separate ownership. It's owned by the same group that owns the town center.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Metcalf, do you have any questions?
No questions.
All right. So that's great. Let's get to the presentation by the applicant, I think.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and try to share my screen with you. Just a moment. Okay. And can I, you can see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Okay, well, thank you. My name is Garrett Greeloo with Renescent Hotels. Very excited to be here this evening. We're, we're really excited about the project we're proposing. We believe it's a good fit for the community, a good fit for the site. We've learned a lot since our last proposal for the project a number of years ago, and we are very excited about the project we're going to be talking about tonight. Let's see if I can advance this slide. Having trouble. There we go. We have a lot to cover. We're going to be focusing principally on the hotel land use ordinance that Sean made reference to earlier in the four categories within that ordinance. Site planning, design, the last category in the ordinance will be covered in a lot of detail in the project site and architecture and landscape categories. A bit of project history. Renescent Hotels, as most you know, is a local family owned company. I am a member of that family. The company can trace its roots back to the 1950s with my grandfather's purchase of a small motel in downtown San Francisco. My father expanded the company in the mid 70s with the purchase of the Corder Madera Inn, which at the time was known as the Edgewater Inn. He expanded the original 60 rooms by adding 50 rooms between 1975 and 1981 to bring the total to 110 rooms. And also in the mid 70s, built the restaurant, which opened as the Pepper Mill, and then was Max's for many years. The facility has performed well for many years, but certainly we've seen a deterioration and deterioration in our performance recently, over the last few years. And we really attributed that to a dated facility and a facility that is frankly just worn out. We have significant infrastructure issues at the property and it's really apparent to us and to our guests, I think, at this point, that it's simply at the end of its economic useful life. Access GFA is our project architect. They've done a great job for us thus far. They have extensive experience in, in hotel design and architecture. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Corey Creff to say a few things. So Corey, if you're on the line, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello and good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Corey Creff and I'm a founding principal with Access GFA Architecture and Design. We're very pleased and honored that Garrett and Doug entrusted us to design this new hotel. And we're excited to share it with you tonight and receive feedback. As Doug mentioned, sorry, as Garrett mentioned, a bit of background about our firm. We specialize exclusively in hospitality and multifamily. Over the last 20 years, we've completed over 30 ground up hotels as well as having remodeled over 100 hotel properties. So we have a lot of experience in this area. But this particular site is very near and dear to me personally. As I lived in Corder Madera for 10 years and raised my kids here. They went to school at Neil Cummins, at Hall Middle and Redwood. Many of my closest friends live in the community and I take the responsibility of introducing a new built form here very seriously. The team that's working with me, led by Design Director Rory O'Connell, will be sharing with you our progress. We believe it is a worthy addition to the town and something everyone can be proud of. I hope you will be as excited as I am and will give it your support. Over the course of this presentation, you're also going to be hearing from Tom Holloway, Principal with KLA. They're a landscape architect. Amy Ryder with Archimy Consulting is our sustainability consultant. And Stephanie Bishop with ESA is our environmental consultant. So I know we've got a lot of ground to cover and I'm going to send it back to Garrett.
Thank you, Corey. Rory, I believe, were you going to say a few things about the next slide at this point? Thank you, Corey. Rory, I believe, were you going to say a few things about the next slide at this point?
Sure, yeah, happy to do so. Hi, everyone. I'm Rory O'Connell. Thanks for the introduction, everybody. Nice to see you all, even if it's on Zoom. Yes, as as Garrett and Adam mentioned, we had a first community meeting back in October. We presented our site use concepts for what we thought of the context and how best to use the site. And we gave a very brief TED Talk history lesson on our interpretation of vernacular architecture in Central Marin, Corte Madera. And we're going to cover some of that later. Generally, we got some very positive and encouraging feedback from the members of the public who attended. People seemed enthusiastic about preserving the the pond habitat. And we were also encouraged not to be too constrained by historical precedent when it came to architecture, which is very encouraging to hear. So those are the takeaways we took from from that, and we've been working on it for a couple of months since. Happy to show you our progress later.
Great, thanks Rory. Okay, we put a lot of time and effort in trying to decide which type of hotel project to propose for the site. To assist us with that process, we hired two hotel consulting firms. And the town also, as part of the hotel land use ordinance, actually hired their own consultants as well. And our two consultants and the town's consultants really came back with very similar recommendations. And that was that we should target the upscale hotel market now with this facility, considering our location in Central Marin and our proximity to Highway 101. The hotel industry classifies itself actually into six different categories. From economy, something like a Motel Six, all the way up to luxury, which would be a Ritz Carlton. The up and upscale hotel brand would be in the upper tier of those, or the upper end of those six different categories. It was also recommended that we consider an extended stay hotel. Extended stay hotels typically have larger guest rooms with efficiency kitchens conducive to longer-term stays. Certainly doesn't mean that all our stays would be long-term. In fact, we would expect less than 10% of our stays to extend beyond 30 days, and certainly the majority would actually be less than five days. Our consultants also recommend that we affiliate the hotel with a national brand, preferably Marriott or Hilton. These brands have very powerful frequent stay programs that drive significant business, most likely more than 50% of the total business. And so our consultants really saw this as really a critical component to any successful hotel development. Putting this all together, we settled on residence in by Marriott, which is their high-end extended stay brand. We are proposing, as mentioned earlier, 149 guest rooms with 160 parking spaces. A restaurant is not part of the project, but we are, we will be serving guests breakfast in the morning and also have a bar in the evening with light snacks. For other food and beverage, we'd be encouraging our guests to patronize other local restaurants. We are planning about 3,500 square feet of meeting space, which is consistent with the, well, we currently have about 3,000 square feet of meeting space at the facility. So similar in size, we believe that's appropriate for the market. And finally, the Hotel Land Use Ordinance speaks about high-quality design, and I just wanted to mention at the outset that this is certainly consistent with our objectives. We live in the community. We're going to see this building every day, and it's important for us to put for the high-quality design. So we certainly are aligned in this respect. Okay, the hotel land use ordinance, this is where we spend the majority of our time. We are seeking density bonuses in these four categories here, as Sean had talked somewhat about earlier. And the first one, environmental sustainability. We are seeking Cal Green Tier One compliance and planning some voluntary options as well. As Corey mentioned earlier, we have hired an environmental consultant to assist in this effort. And at this point, I would like to introduce everyone to Amy Ryder with Archimy Consulting. Amy, are you there?
I am. Thanks so much, Garrett.
Great. Go ahead and let me know. Just tell me to advance the slides when you're ready.
Happy to do so. So, good evening. Thank you, everyone who's in attendance, and thanks for the the warm welcome, both Chair and Commissioners, as well as the public. I'm Amy Ryder, as was mentioned, with Archimy Consulting. And I get to walk you through some of our thinking around green building, Cal Green, and overall site sustainability. So if you'll go ahead, Garrett. So wanted to just start with the goals of sustainability with respect to this project. And as was mentioned, we're going to be pursuing Cal Green Tier One, as well as some elective measures. And we're still considering what that all will entail eventually, and we'll walk you through some of our thinking at this point in time. But in order to give you just some grounding, I thought it would be useful to talk briefly about what is this thing that we call Cal Green? Just for context, for those of you perhaps less familiar with this this particular concept. Garrett, go ahead. So Cal Green is the shorthand for the green building standard. It's a part of the state code. And for buildings, we do require that they meet a green building standard in the state of California. And this is not something folks generally talk about. So I do like to spend some time giving this introduction. So it is enforced at a local level, and each local jurisdiction has some discretion over exactly how it's enforced. And just for the purposes of this evening, to be clear, what we'll be talking about, because this is a hotel, it really looks at the residential standards under Cal Green. So it's a little bit unique in that, with the exception of energy efficiency. So go ahead, Garrett. So Cal Green is unlike other codes, because it has both mandatory measures and voluntary elements. And especially because we're talking about going to Tier One, there's a little bit of fluctuation between what we have to do and what we're planning to do just to go above and beyond to meet this bonus ordinance. Go ahead, Garrett. Thanks. So there are five major elements to Cal Green. It is very holistic and sometimes complicated because of that, but just try to keep it, keep it simple and give you a quick overview here. So the five elements are planning and design, energy efficiency, water efficiency, material use, and environmental quality. And all of these work together to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and result in a healthier and more environmentally responsible building. So just a quick overview, these sections, planning and design, just look at all of the site elements. So that includes stormwater management, both during construction, and as everyone has spoken about already, related to the pond and water management during the entire life of the building will be something that we consider in design. Electric vehicles and parking as well are taken into consideration in this section. There's also energy efficiency requirements above the what is required of the state code, including high-efficiency windows and potentially in this project, some photovoltaic systems. We have water efficiency, and in this case, really looking at not just high-efficiency fixtures, but certainly spending a lot of time looking at the site landscape plan and irrigation with responsible water usage. It's come to our attention recently that there may be even reclaimed water on site, so potentially looking at using that for irrigating the the site itself. And then materials and just resource efficiency in general. So this looks at managing the waste during construction and demolition. So making sure we're recycling the materials all throughout the construction process. And then reusing materials, using recycled content materials in the construction itself, reducing how much cement is used in any concrete products and things of that nature. And then environmental quality really looks at the indoor health of the building and doing pollutant control during construction, looking at finished materials and resilient flooring in particular, and things like that to help reduce any kind of contaminants in the building itself. So again, all of that kind of brings together the overall sustainability of the site. And then above and beyond what Cal Green Tier One requires, we are looking at a few additional measures that I think are worthwhile for conversation today and look forward to hearing your feedback on them. But as I mentioned, in the energy category, we are looking at potentially using photovoltaics, solar power on the site, as well as all-electric construction. Starting to move toward that in the state. And then potentially using grain water capture for the onsite laundry facility, which is a pretty exciting potential opportunity for water reuse on the site. Because of the site's proximity to to the water and the the total water table being so high, definitely considering waterproofing the first floor and in addition to some of the increased height requirements that are already there. And then the site, a few of these were mentioned previously, but we are looking at the potential for additional electric vehicle charging on site. Certainly having a bike-share program and town shuttle for guests, so we can minimize transportation impact of the site and the project, while also protecting birds with reduced light pollution for dark sky compliance and bird safe design overall. So that's just a quick overview of some of our thinking. I look forward to the conversation and questions that come. Back to you, Garrett.
Great, thank you. That was very informative. So the next area in the hotel land use ordinance is community integration, and there's three areas we're focusing on here. The first one is the dedication of interior space. Earlier, I mentioned that we are proposing approximately 3,500 square feet of meeting space in the facility. We are planning to make this meeting space available free of charge to local nonprofit organizations, local associations, small government groups, subject to a limit of 20 meetings per year. The 20 meetings per year is not a hard stop. Certainly, if we had additional requests beyond 20 in a given year, we would consider those on a space-available basis. The free meetings would include all the benefits of our paying customers, including meeting room setup, service and breakdown, and full use of the facility, including the pre-function space and the outdoor breakout areas. To monitor usage, we'd be happy to produce an annual report to the town upon request. The next area under community integration is the dedication of exterior space. And this relates to the onsite pond and habitat preservation and enhancement. Several months ago, we met with Barbara Salzman and Ren Audubon on site to get their thoughts on really what we can do to make the pond better in many ways. And after a lot of discussions, they had recommended, or we had asked them really for an environmental consultant, and they had suggested that, among others, that we consider ESA environmental. Stephanie, as mentioned earlier, Stephanie Bishop with ESA is here to discuss sort of habitat preservation enhancement and some plans with respect to that. So I'll invite Stephanie now to say a few things.
Hi, thanks, Garrett. As Garrett said, I'm Stephanie Bishop, and I'm a restoration ecologist at Environmental Science Associates, or ESA. And just to give a little background about our firm, we've been working with clients in the Bay Area to protect and enhance and restore natural ecosystems for more than 40 years. We provide an integrated, multi-discipline approach to projects grounded in a deep understanding of ecology, and we have worked on many wetland restoration and enhancement projects in Marin County, including an enhancement project at Shorebird Marsh in Corte Madera. Yes, ESA also provides a full suite of landscape architecture, planning, and design services. For this project, we have a team of experienced restoration ecologists and landscape architects that are at the beginning stages of providing a conceptual plan and brief description of the proposed enhancements around the pond. We've visited the site and walked around the pond and we saw and understand the sensitive areas along the pond perimeter, where the Black Crown Knight Herons use non-native trees for roosting. And the concept plan will include selectively removing non-native invasive brown cover shrubs and trees and planting native vegetation that will provide potential bird habitat. We understand the preservation of the trees that the Black Crown Knight Herons use is important, and these trees would remain in place to continue to provide habitat for the herons. Additional small trees and shrubs are anticipated to be a part of the enhancement plan to provide additional potential habitat to other areas around the pond. I, it's important to note, though, that enhancement opportunities are fairly limited around the pond due to many factors, including the general location of the pond in this urbanized setting, the steep edges, and man-made nature of the pond. That being said, we will put together a plan that we think will best enhance the area around the pond within the constraints of the system. The project is also considering installing a diffused oxygen system to improve water quality within the pond. And we look forward to working with KLA to integrate the pond enhancement with the public engagement pieces of the project, which may include a dedicated landscape area with seating adjacent to the pond, a footpath between the pond and the highway and public parking near the pond. With that, I'll pass it back to Garrett.
Great, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, the the last area under community integration is our facility as emergency response resource. At the community meeting, I mentioned our desire to enter into a sheltering agreement with the Red Cross. The thought was that we could provide our facility to the Red Cross in the event of a large-scale emergency. Since that meeting, we've learned that the Red Cross no longer enters into sheltering agreements in advance of the emergency, and they don't, they no longer do this because they recognize that each emergency is unique, and it's not reasonable to ask a facility to commit itself without first understanding the nature of the disaster. So alternatively, what the Red Cross is now doing is simply maintaining a list of facilities that would consider helping in the event of emergency. And we certainly plan to put this facility on that list, and would certainly be our intention to help. But because we're no, under no legal obligation to assist, we're not considering this a community benefit for purposes of the Hotel Land Use Ordinance, and we're not asking for any points in this area. But because this was something that we discussed in our community meeting, I did want to go ahead and bring that up this evening. Okay, the next two areas, where really most of the substance is in the presentation, is in site planning and design and public realm. And I will pass things back to Rory now to go through this area in some detail. So Rory, I'm going to go ahead and stop share on my screen here. If you could go ahead and pick up the presentation from here.
Great, thank you so much. Let me spin up my screen here. Let me know when you can see it. Okay, great. Well, thank you. So yes, as Garrett and Adam and Sean have mentioned, you know, we're seeking a density bonus under the land use ordinance. And so these are the criteria for site planning and design public realm. We use these criteria as a starting point for the design, and we've tried to structure our presentation around these lines as well. Just to refresh everyone's memories, this is the the site we're talking about in the context of some of the sort of larger, high-profile buildings in the surrounding area. And slightly closer view showing the existing Best Western and the pond. So we're going to run through some diagrams, and if you were at the first community meeting, you've already seen these, so I'll try and be brief. On the left, we have the existing, and on the right, what we have is not quite a blank slate. The TD Ameritrade Building sits in the most prominent corner of the site, and as far as we know, will be staying for the foreseeable future. And then maintaining the pond is essential to this approach to the project. And so that really dominates that northeast corner. So this is, this is the chessboard with the space left over. We then looked at exiting and entry to the site. You know, we're aware right now that these these two entrances along Madera are very close to the off-ramp, and so there's potential for conflict there. We kind of wanted to avoid that. We looked at an entrance exit on Tamal Vista, which seemed very disruptive to the neighbors. And so we settled on a single mid- And so we settled on a single mid-block entry-exits. And from there, we started looking at what kind of uses surround the site. So what this tells us is that the parts of the project which would be disrupted by noise and which are noisy themselves, like the trash enclosure and the laundry, belong on the east side along the freeway. Spaces which generate less noise and which would be sensitive to noise, like the meeting rooms, belong on the west, closer to the quiet residential street. So from there, starting with an idea of the size of the building based on a room count, we looked at ways of siting the building. One option was to go for an urban feeling with the building tied up against the sidewalk. But given that there are single-story residences directly across the street, we felt it was more appropriate to go with a more compact building at the center of the site, using parking and landscape as a buffer and foreground. And then as we're in a transition zone from larger buildings like the town center to, again, a residential neighborhood, we thought it was more appropriate to segment the hotel so that it appears more as a collection of buildings than one large mass. And that led to this sort of open shape you see here rather than a typical, you know, L-shaped block. To take this further, we started introducing variation in height, a mix of four and three-story elements to create more differentiation. So to compare what we've arrived at with where we started with the existing, we're thinking a taller building in the center of the site versus a shorter one pushed right out of the sidewalk is more appropriate. Looking at parking and landscaping as a buffer. And we're thinking that the pond is preserved and that it is retained as a visual amenity and as a landscape, but it's also sort of removed from the hustle and bustle of the hotel activity. We've done some shadow studies, which will finalize later in the process. But generally speaking, we're not seeing the building shadow extending beyond the site, even in the winter, which is important for neighbors. We also wanted to compare the visual impact of the existing hotel with what we're proposing. We're sort of comparing in the existing, a two-story building very close to the property line with a three- and four-story building much further from the property line. And the general idea is that the apparent roof line should be about the same between the existing and proposed for somebody standing across the street in Tamil Vista. And so that was a general overview of the site planning ideas. That's how we got to this configuration. We've since gone a step further and studied both architecture and landscape in a little more detail. I'm going to turn this over to Tom Holloway for a couple of slides and talk about the site itself. Tom, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you very much. My name is Tom Holloway. I'm a principal at KLA Landscape Architecture. We're quite familiar with the area. We've been working with the city of Larkspur over the last five to eight years on their parks master plan as well as several projects associated with the mitigation for the Bonner Bridge project. So through that area quite a bit. The goal with this project is really to use the landscape as a fabric that ties the new hotel and the site into the existing surrounding community and the pond. We want to maintain and enhance the character of the site and use the landscape to fit the proposed hotel site into the community. And the main element, really the key element that we're looking at is to maintain and enhance the existing pond. The site design, which Rory just went through, is all dedicated to maintaining the pond and the landscape. What we're going to be talking about here also is really key on maintaining the pond. The footprint of the proposed improvements does not encroach any closer than the existing site facilities do. In fact, for a good portion around the pond, the proposed facilities are actually further away from the edge of the pond than the existing facilities are. And when you look at the north side of the pond where the parking is, where there's a building there now. So we're actually kind of the apparent site facilities being building where we're quite a bit further away and a lot more landscape on the south side of the pond as well. We'll be working with ESA around the pond to to make sure that the landscape space that's provided is efficient for the revegetation that they're looking at. So on the plan that we're looking at right now, the light green is the areas that we're anticipating as being more of a habitat and revegetation of the pond. But as ESA gets into it and they determine that they might need more space here and there, then that that line will change depending on how the design works itself out. The site design is also put together to save as many of the existing trees as we could. The existing trees on this site plan are the squiggly light green ones. And really, most of the big trees that were around the site are maintained. And I think one of the things that I really wanted to point out too is that the grouping of redwood trees along Highway 101, which is that dark group that Rory is pointing out right now. And those guys remain and are in a good location where they're not competing with architecture. So they'll be able to remain as a standalone, really key element out on the site. We really want to maintain and accentuate the architectural forms and create a pleasant guest experience, both onsite and from adjacent views. So the landscape is layered around the building. We've got zones of landscape and site amenities so that the key elements from the entry and the courtyard space, which is where all the guest activities take places, is our more formal landscape treatment. But as you move away from the building and get to the edges, a more informal treatment that then will blend with the office to the north and the residential scale landscape to the west. And then utilizing more screening and more landscape along the, sorry, evergreen shrubs and trees and maybe even some berming along the Highway 101 frontage to be able to really create some nice screening from Highway 101. And one of the key items too is we've got Mount Tam over to the west and we really want to maintain that and make that part of the guest experience. So looking at providing some buffer to the homes, but still not having big trees to block the view. So from the guest rooms and from the courtyard, the ability to look to the west and see Mount Tam. We've provided pleasant and efficient guest circulation through the site, and that is all forms of circulation. Very easy and clear vehicular circulation. So off of that entry drive off of Madeira, it's very clear where the front of the hotel is and how you drop off. Circulation around the site is also pretty clear and parking is distributed pretty evenly around the site with a with a longer hotel like this. We want to make sure that we've got parking that's adjacent to where guest rooms are. And the way that the parking is laid out is really geared more towards having more parking where the guest rooms are. You'll also see that we don't have very many straight runs. In fact, close to Tamil Vista where that existing tree is, we, the way that the site is laid out, we had enough space that we could really manipulate the parking and kind of move things around so that we're able to save the trees, but also get rid of those long, straight runs of drive aisle. We've placed the loading zone and our service area and our trash enclosure and all those elements over on the Highway 101 side so that there's no issue with noise for even the adjacent office, but especially not the residences. Of course, the parking in the drive aisles, they meet all the code requirements for quantity. And we've got the access requirements for the fire department. And we've even provided some parking for non-guests over on by the pond. So if somebody from the community wants to come up and enjoy the trail that connects along the side of the pond, we've got some parking that's reserved strictly for that. Pedestrian circulation throughout the site is provided for ease of access for guests, of course, within the site itself, but then also to be able to get to facilities around. So there's an accessible path of travel and accessible sidewalk from the front door that heads south to Madeira Boulevard. And what we've got with that, we really want to try to make sure that people aren't crossing Madeira at a mid-block. So we're looking at and we're going to work with the town traffic engineers to set up a barrier or signs or something along those lines so that when you come down that sidewalk, it forces you to walk along the frontage of Ameritrade and then cross at the crosswalk at the Tamil Vista-Madera intersection instead of a mid-block crossing. But we've also provided an additional pedestrian circulation or sidewalk out to Tamil Vista. So if people want to go for a walk, they can go out and walk along Tamil Vista. We also have the, I think the next slide, if I'm remembering this right, Rory. One more, and then we'll maybe come back to this. No, I skipped ahead. No, sorry, I was wrong. Go back. So the, yeah, the Tamil Vista, the walkway out to Tamil Vista. And I talked briefly about the DG walkway we've got along the east side of the pond. It's really just a nice nature trail. And the idea there is that it's a packed earth or a DG path meant to be very natural. Some interpretive signs along the way, maybe a couple benches, but meant to be very low impact. So that people stay on the trail, learn a little bit about the habitat and how the pond is there and how the tidal marshes work and all that sort of stuff. Guest amenities are focused in the courtyard, which we're seeing here on this slide. That's where we have our pool, our lounge, our outdoor meeting room space. We've got a spa, fire pits, shade, outdoor kitchen, all sorts of good stuff for the guests. But the building surrounds a majority of it. So it's really just this west side that's open. But not a lot of, we don't have concern with any noise or anything from the pool area really leaking out beyond because it's pushed back quite a bit from Tamil Vista. And then again, it is surrounded by the building. Rory, if we can go back one slide, I apologize. But we also have, right where your hand is right now, we've got bicycle parking with the idea of having guest parking. Sorry, guest use of bicycles. Got a pretty big area right near the front door for guests to be able to use bicycles. And then we've got additional bike racks throughout the site that exceed the code requirements for bike parking. Couple of things then, that's the vehicular, the bicycle and the pedestrian circulation. Couple of things about the landscape. We're going to meet and exceed the code requirements that were already talked about by Amy. You know, really looking for the right plant at the right size to reduce green waste. We've got, when you look at this site plan versus the existing, we've actually got more landscape space around here. So more opportunity for photosynthesis and clean air and all that sort of good stuff that comes along with it. And of course, the habitat around the pond. Will comply with the water-efficient landscape ordinance and the requirements of the MMWD. We also have stormwater treatment areas that are placed throughout the site. So we've got the landscape that's integrated with the stormwater filtration and storage areas. Working with ESA to make sure that we eliminate and reduce the chance for invasive species. All the formal landscape is directly around the building and not, and then really breaking away very quickly to more native and naturalized plantings. And then a large screening along the Highway 101 frontage. And then Rory, if we can go to the next slide, I think one of the key things that we want to talk about too is that additional landscape fifteen-foot buffer that we've got on the Tamil Vista Boulevard side. And as you can see in the site plan, we've got a nice generous eight-foot wide sidewalk that runs through there. So the residents of the town of Cordera have a nice walking path through there that weaves back and forth to save. We've got it pushed up against the curb in some cases so that we can save some existing trees. But then we've also got it separated from the curb to provide a little more protection and separation for pedestrians in that location. There's a fence between the hotel and Tamil Vista. And there's large shrubs in there. And the last slide that we'll look at, this next one is a cross-section through there. So that you can see the idea is that from the residences with the plant material and the fence, you won't see the parking lot. The evergreen shrubs that we've got along the fence will really block the view of the hotel for the most part. And then the small street trees that we're adding are a nice amenity. And it also allows from our side, the hotel guests can look over the top of those trees, not see the residences because they're screened, but look over the top and see Mount Tam. And I think this is a good one too. The little dash line that's right in the middle of the sidewalk where the two people are walking, that's where the existing fence is to the hotel right now. So you can see that we're almost tripling the size of the frontage on the Tamil Vista side. That's it from my end. So Rory, I'm going to send it back to you.
Tom, thanks so much. So back to architecture. When we looked at the elements of Cordera Madeira and Central Marin vernacular, we also very crudely broke them down into three very broad eras. From the very traditional on the left of this axis to the more contemporary on the right. We did this to help us identify where we might find opportunities to do something which is both appropriately modern, but also reflective of historical precedent. When we looked at that vernacular, we identified six elements as being present in most significant buildings in Cordera Madeira since Marin regardless of era. And we let these guide our design when it came to massing articulation, trying to find ways to work them into what we were looking at. We're looking at a palette of materials which are durable, energy efficient and which fit the context. We're still in early design, so we've not selected products. We haven't selected colors, what have you. But this is the kind of thing that we're envisioning. And we looked at a couple of ways to articulate this mass, starting with a very streamlined, modern type facade. We agreed this just didn't have much to do with Cordera Madeira nor Central Marin, so moved past it fairly quickly. We looked at a sort of scaled up craftsman approach, which emphasized pitched roofs and horizontal expression at the small scale. This felt more appropriate for the context. But lastly, we looked at an approach which pulled from each of the eras we mentioned before. Here we have, you know, clean lines and planes of a contemporary building. We're accentuating this step at the second to third floor where the double queens become king suites. You're really emphasizing the horizontality of the mass. We looked at some of the big moves that define mid-century architecture, like the generous canopy on the existing Best Western. Overhanging roofs, connection to nature, natural materials. We also took some cues from Bay Area regionalism, which is a sort of prairie-style derivative in the differentiation of the top, middle and the base. And in using heavier materials lower in the building and visually lighter materials higher up. So thanks for being patient. We talked about how we got here. I'm going to wrap up this section of presentation with some initial perspectives taken from a few vantage points in and around the site. So starting here, this is the proposed view from across Madeira at the Chevron Station. What I want to point out here is that step from four stories along the freeway down to three as we get closer to the TD Ameritrade building and Tamil Vista. We also wanted to create a generous arrival experience. The front door has been pushed back ninety feet from the curb. The existing Best Western has a sixty-foot deep canopy, which is really one of the most defining elements of the hotel. And we're taking a cue from that with a similarly bold canopy at the drop-off. Getting closer to the front door, we see one of the opportunities of this site configuration, which is that we can create a lobby which is transparent right through to the courtyard. This will house the check-in, the lounge, the dining and create a visual amenity as you drive by. So it'll be sort of an active inhabited space. It's also important to mention that we're in a floodplain. And part of this project involves elevating the ground floor above existing grade. We're proposing doing that through a combination of sloping up towards the building and then a plinth outside of and around the ground floor. This becomes a strong identifying element to the project as well as an opportunity to provide planting right up against the building. Taking a step back, we wanted to get a sense of how this looks from the freeway because it will have some visibility, especially if you're backed up in traffic waiting to get on the off-ramp. Preserving the pond means the building is angled away from the freeway. The north end here is two hundred and fifty feet from the road. We have an existing berm in the foreground that we're not going to mess with. And I'd like to point out here, we're taking advantage of the turns and breaks in the building to provide some articulation and reduce that impression of a single large building. Now, on the other side, on Tamil Vista, we can see the impact of the widened public right-of-way. This interior courtyard presents rather than a wall, sort of an opening to the street. And the closest part of the building is a hundred feet from the curb. So, you know, very generous setback along here. This isn't exactly the same angle, but it's around the same spot showing sort of the existing context. Undergrounding utilities is part of the proposed public realm enhancement. Undergrounding utilities is part of the proposed public realm enhancement. So some of this poles and spaghetti would, would go away and be replaced underground. And this shows the existing sidewalk, which is kind of tight and the existing hotel, which is fairly close to the property line. So this is that two-story close-up we're hoping to replace with four-story further away. So you can see the, the fencing that Tom spoke about earlier, some of this, so this birmingham that meandering path. Want to point out the, this planting is sort of a graphic abstraction at this stage of design. We're, we're not proposing rigid to a brewery for the neighbors. Don't worry about that. And then we're going to wrap this up with two views of the interior of the project. On the right here, we have meeting rooms with a pre-function space that opens to a patio. We have a pool, you know, cited to catch the afternoon sun. You know, the lobby that's, that's visible through and through has an exterior patio. Guests can take their coffee outside. And we're looking at, you know, short fences to provide some additional screening, you know, from parking to that, that courtyard environment. And we've also got large areas of soft scape identified for planting and for stormwater management. So that concludes the architectural concept design. We're still working on it, but we think this is the appropriate direction for this project on this site. With that, I think Garrett wanted to talk about the density bonus and what we're seeking. Thanks so much for your time and look forward to answering your questions.
Great. Thank you Rory. Looks like you have one more slide there, but okay, we are almost there. This slide summarizes the points we are seeking under the hotel bonus ordinance. As mentioned earlier, we are proposing a project with a part of 0.58, which is point too far over the base four, base far. So 24 points are needed. We're seeking a total of 29 points. As you can see below on this slide, we're asking for 12 points under site planning and design. Eight points under environmental sustainability. A total of six points under community integration. And three more points under public realm. So again, a total of 29 points. Five more than the 24 points required. So that concludes our presentation. We are looking forward to your comments and questions.
Thank you, Garrett. I'm going to check with the commissioners here to see if they have some questions, which would I hope be short and concise. So we can get directly to public comment. Margaret Bandell, do you have any comments or questions? Excuse me, let me strike that. Any questions for Garrett and his presentation?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rizzo.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Monday, do you have any questions for this group?
Not at this time.
Right. Commissioner Metcalf.
Yes, I have two questions. One has to do with the public parking by the pond. Is that in addition to the 160 spaces or included in the total of 160 spaces?
That is included in the 160.
Okay. And the other question is just if I'm looking at this right on page 46 of your presentation. The one under the architectural design studies, Google leaning, Northern California modern. Yeah. Okay, I was looking at the drawing upper right-hand corner. The white space towards the left between the first two windows. I don't know. Let's see what I mean.
Do with this, this, this band here?
No, up, next one up there. Okay. I noticed on the bottom one, you showed the wood. You're not showing that on the top one. I'm wondering if I'm assuming that's a part that will be facing the freeway, that upper, the upper drawing.
Yes.
I was wondering to get more contrast, the more interest if that should also be that wood.
Yes, I think it's a good observation. Yes, this, this faces the freeway and looks down on the, the loading area. So this is sort of a helicopter view. Yes, we are, we have not looked at nor resolved color yet. We do want to introduce, you know, more contrast than is shown in this, this first study. And the later views show more contrast and looking for, you know, chances for, you know, a pop of contrasting color or a pop of like an accent wood. So that it doesn't become a monotonous mess. Yeah. Trying to get away from large white plates.
Yeah, one wind cup in Coor de Madera is one too many. And what is seen by the freeway is important. And I like contrast. I like the use of the black that you did. I'm assuming it's black. I like the black around the windows and stuff. And you may want to get more black along that side just for the contrast. And as I say, the wood in that one little section I was asking about.
So it's funny you mentioned it. We actually weren't going to bring it up unless asked because this wasn't in the, the deck we submitted ahead of time, but we, we did some initial color studies. And we felt that going substantially darker was a stronger project.
Yeah.
So this is kind of based on the West Point Inn color scheme with that sort of vertical stration at the bottom, you know, dark bands and darker on the windows.
And then the white for the uprights for the overhang where people drive in really stands out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Super. I do too.
That's it. And one more question. And Peter, this may or may not be the right time to ask. So jump in if I'm on. There wasn't a lot of discussion about lighting and I wondered if there are any thoughts that they have on how they're going to work with lighting. The use of it, not what the fixture looks like.
Yeah, I think that it's, it's perfectly fine to ask. I think I see various notations that they want to be dark sky compliant. But Rory, go ahead and respond to that in general, if you might.
Honestly, I, I don't think we, we have any thoughts on it just yet. I think we're earlier in the design than these perspectives might than you to believe. We really wanted to get this in front of the commission and get feedback from the community and from, from the town before we took it that far. So, you know, assuming we move into further development, we will be getting a lighting consultant on board and working on how to light it and how that appears. But beyond saying yes, that it would be dark sky compliant, I don't think we've, we've given it that much thought yet.
Well, that's something we require and we should. You know, with commercial buildings, we have them dim, dim lights at a certain time. I don't know how appropriate that would be for the motel. Where, you know, how appropriate would be to have the light dim out during the night and yet, you know, have a photo thing. If so, someone walks by, it goes on, you know, all different things that can be used. And I think it would be important how people accept the lighting of the hotel, the exterior lighting. So keep that in mind as you develop this.
That's a great point. We will do.
Okay. Peter.
Okay. Fabulous. Okay. At this time then, we'll open this up to public comment. Tracy, the email address for public comment.
That is publiccomment@tcmaile.org.
All right. And with that said, we will check in with Tracy from time to time here to see if she has any emails. And we can read an email for three minutes. Otherwise your commentary is limited to three minutes. I will keep a time of that three minutes myself and then advise you if you are over that time period. So let's open it up and I'm hoping that we have some public comment here. Do you have any raised hands?
I, I do. I'm going to state your name and I will allow you to talk and you'll want to then, then unmute yourself so that you can be heard. I have Peter Schwartz. Go ahead, Peter, unmute yourself.
Yes, it says Peter Schwartz, 381 Chapman. I'm very much pleased with this study session and the renderings of the proposed project versus the previous project that we encountered when I was on the planning commission. So I'm very pleased with the direction. A couple of areas that popped up for me. And I'm also happy to see my former talented colleague, Amy Ryder on the project. But under the sustainability, I'm involved in next generation code and heavily involved in a couple of policies around smart grid enabling buildings and interested to see how much PV is going on. Is there consideration for storage? So if the grid goes down, the hotel still runs. Please to see that EV charging is part of that. Phyllis brought up a great question on the lighting. Having headed up the lighting group at Lawrence Berkeley National Lab. I think it's important to match what the next generation lighting code is moving towards, which is what's called circadian lighting. So that the, what will likely be LED lighting is not a single spectrum, but is able to shift color from daytime to nighttime to not inhibit flora and fauna. And also help with the people able to sleep. I'm also wondering if the paving materials are going to be permeable and also be cool paving. So we don't create another heat island. And the other thing to alert you to is that energy code is moving to all electric equipment for HVAC and water heating. So to begin thinking about that relative with the PB. And the last comment I'll make is I hope that all the 160 parking spaces are full size and not compact. Because all you have to do is go across the street, the town center and see how problematic the compact parking spaces are in, in real function. People tend to span two spaces because an individual space is too small. And with that, I'll end my comments and just look forward to where this project goes. I'm very pleased again with the direction.
Thank you very much, Peter. Tracy, who do you have next?
There was an additional raised hand. There, there it is. Cheryl. Go ahead. This is Cheryl Longnati.
Yes, yes, this is, this is Cheryl Longnati. I'm here with my partner, Vicky Newton, and we both, I think have a, we're residents on Tamil Vista and we have generally favorable response to the presentation. Particularly, of course, the easement provided along Tamil Vista and those amenities there. One concern I have is the traffic on Madera, the on and off ramps there and the speed that traffic tends to, motor vehicles tend to go there. And, and I'm very curious as to the details about encouraging pedestrians to go down to the, the intersection at Madera and Tamil Vista instead of crossing, you know, the Russian roulette cross, crossing of those four lanes. The, the previous project in the traffic studies, it was recommended having elliptical roundabout. And I would hope that would maybe get on the table again because that with the landscaping inside the roundabout, I think it can really discourage people from crossing. And I, I think that may be the best way to to, to have a safer situation, both for the pedestrians and for the motor vehicles. But overall, looking forward to seeing this realized. Thank you.
Yes, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl. Barbara, I see your hand is up. Go ahead and unmute when you're ready.
Yeah, thanks for calling on me. I am, I too want to express our pleasure. I'm with Marin Audubon Society in the change in direction of the, this project in terms of the pond. We don't usually comment, we don't ever comment on architectural design or whatever. But anyway, I'm glad that you hired ESA and I don't know Stephanie, but hi Stephanie. And I hope to get to know her through this project. I've worked with a lot of other people there. I do have two, two comments though. I, I'd like to express some concern about the, well, about how the diffuser would impact wildlife use of the pond. I'm not an expert in diffusers, but I would, or aridators. I, I'm just concerned that they would cause some impact or reduction in the wildlife being able to use the pond. The ones I've seen have usually been spraying. I don't think you probably could have that here because it would be probably spraying, you know, and would, would be awkward with the size of the pond and the adjacent uses. But, but anyway, that's one concern. The other thing I'd like to mention it, well, one other thing about the pond, we had kind of hoped that you could gradually replace and of course it would take place over a long time. Those roosting trees, non-native, they're all non-native with natives. So I'd like to see that being considered. It would take, you know, some, some years. But if you plant natives, that might be eventually they would grow up and take the place of, of the non-native. And just one other thing that I haven't heard you mention, I'm glad about the lighting. But you, I'd like to see considered and San Francisco has an ordinance and I think the Oakland does also about using wildlife friendly glass. So birds can see, there's a lot of different kinds of, of treated glass that birds can see, but people, it doesn't disturb people's views. So that would be something useful since this does have a lot of glass and it's right next to a wildlife habitat. That would be beneficial if you could do that. And anyway, thanks. You're doing, going in a good direction and we look forward to this being developed in a, in an environmentally sound way. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate that. I let you run over, but okay.
I have, I'm sorry, not able to catch this person's name. It says GGP for their or their name.
Thank you, Tracy. It's Garrel Page. What I would like to see is a more topographic correctness of this. It's very hard to get a clear example of the scale and how this building sits on the site. There are a number of things. Your, your sort of prairie style atrium is very attractive, but I think it may be hard to see in the actual site, the way things go there, the traffic on Madera and one thing another. So I would be curious to have a little bit more information on the actual specific detail as one sees it related to the building in the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Pat Rivasio. Go right ahead, Pat, when you're ready.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my questions. I'm apologizing for being very late to this meeting. So I did miss some of the information you presented, but I had a chance earlier to look through the plans. And I do concur with the previous commenters that overall, I think we've made huge progress since the last iteration. And I want to thank the family and the owners of this hotel for coming back and giving it another shot. You know, accepting that they didn't win the first time around and coming back again, I think it, we are going to end up with a project that will make the whole town happier. I am, I'm glad Barbara Salzman's involved. I almost feel like, oh, if Barbara's involved, I don't need to be because she's looking out for the birds and that's my main concern too. So my question is, maybe you covered it, but what will be done to protect the pond and the bird area during construction? Is there a way to sort of create, you know, just a fabric or a plastic kind of barrier that will help mitigate the construction impacts? Cause I'm afraid, you know, we're probably going to lose all that. There, there were a dozen or so nesting night harens. There were a dozen or so nesting night herons there this weekend when I went by. And I, you know, we're probably going to lose them anyway, but I really hope we will do what we can to retain them. And then my only other concern is to make sure that there's really some effort going into improving the pathway so that people, guests of the hotel and the community, will actually want to walk back there. And one super easy way to do that, if you've walked back there, there's one stretch where there is a quite tall berm that separates the pond from the highway. And if you sit right in front of that berm, the highway noise almost goes away. So I really think it would be a great investment to the project, and I'm sure you'll have some extra fill if we can pack up that berm between, you know, not so high as to obscure the view of the hotel, but definitely as high as the berm is at its highest point. And then bring that all the way along. I think you will create a magical place for people to walk and de-stress and, and watch wildlife. So I just want to make sure there's enough effort paid to that. And then the only other thing is, it doesn't look like there's a lot of trees left on the property from what I can see. And I really hope we are taking every effort to save. I think there were originally 75 mature trees on this property. And I hope we're saving all of the ones that we can save. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I would have Mr. Jim Andrews. And go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
These are sort of preliminary observations. First, they seem to have hit all the points on the zoning ordinance that the town spent a couple of years working on, and I congratulate him on that. One thing, I'm wondering how they are incorporating the possibility that COVID could be not just a one-year problem, but a sort of an endemic problem. Are they going to be upgrading the air filtration system and so on? That's, you know, so basically, how are you going to make yourself COVID flexible, depending on which way it goes? The color scheme, I'm glad they're thinking of a, they're considering a darker color. The bright white, I believe, would cause people to raise the issue about colors. And I'm sure that many members of the planning commission remember the issues when the preserve at Marin was up for consideration. Finally, that's, that's about it. It's a great improvement over what we saw a few years ago. And I thank the owners of the hotel for being patient enough to come back and come up with a much, much, much better design. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim.
I do have one email to read that came in during the last few comments from the public. Is from Patty Stolier, who says, "I appreciate the idea of a large canopy, but be sure it doesn't look like a gas station. Upright might need some development of their design."
Okay. That's pretty specific. That's great. Anybody else with a hand up?
I don't see any additional hands.
No other emails?
Let me check to be sure. No other emails.
Okay. Well, it says there are 41 participants, so surely somebody else might want to see something. But give it a few more seconds here.
We do have an additional hand up. This is Colin Rand. Go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Hi, this is actually his wife, Tara. And I live off of Tamal Vista. And I was just wondering if any consideration is being given to the Best Western used to offer the public access to the pool? And I was wondering if any thoughts have been given to that so that the community could also use some of those amenities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Tara. How are we doing, Tracy? Anyone else?
I don't see anyone else. I'll check email while we give a few minutes to our, our audience. No additional emails. And I don't see any additional raised hands at this time.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comments section of this study session. I think we've got some familiar comments and some good comments here. Adam, you were probably taking notes. And the applicant was probably taking notes, as I was. So we have a list of things. So at this time, I would like to see if the applicant would like to address anything that they heard. Not that you have to, but it's up to you guys. If you have something you want to address, what you heard, please chime in. Garrett?
Sure. The last caller mentioned the swim club, which was something we discussed during our community meeting. And actually, after that meeting, we did actually explore in a little more detail the idea of actually introducing a swim club to the facility. And, and what we really learned in looking at other facilities and brand is that we really, A, don't have the space and B, just don't have the resource to really execute this well. As I think I mentioned during our community meeting, we're, we're comfortable being in the hotel business, but we're just not comfortable being in the health club business. So although we did look at it as part of the facility, we're just not comfortable going in that direction.
Got it. Anything else that you heard that you would like to comment on or turn over to any of your staff for the project?
Yeah, nothing else at this time.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, I mean, there, there may be some questions for Tom that came up with respect to some of the landscaping. And then I think maybe if Stephanie wants to address some of the questions that came up regarding the habitat protection, that, you know, preliminarily, again, it's, you can, there, there may be more to say in the future, but if you want to address those, that may be helpful at this time.
And I was just going to respond to, to two. One was the question about compact parking stalls. And we're obviously very early on in the, in the site design, but at this point, we have of the 160, 22 are compact parking stalls. And for the most part, they're used around the existing to remain trees to provide as much open space around the trees as possible. And then the other one was about COVID in the long term. We have provided multiple and generous outdoor spaces with the idea that, that people can, can congregate further apart so that you have multiple groups that are spread out within the courtyard space. Those are the two items that I wanted to respond to.
Tom, there was, I think this was mentioned during the presentation at some point, that there may be the possibility of birmingham, additional birmingham. Is that something, you know, over on that portion of the pond area? Is that something that, that, I, I thought that was something that one of the presenters on Garrett, on your, your team, had actually mentioned. So is that something that is, you can, you're thinking of considering or looking at further?
Yeah, I, I think it is. We had, we had, we have started initial kind of conversations about that, whether it's earth burning or, again, layering of plant material to create visual burning. But I liked what, what was said, and now I think it was Pat that talked about, or maybe it was Barbara, that talked about how, how the noise goes away when you're behind that burn. So that's really good to know. And I've experienced the same thing walking around the pond. Thank you.
So you thought perhaps Stephanie might want to turn in here?
Right, there was a couple of questions just about the diffuser and the gradual replacement of non-natives, native trees with, for the black-crowned night heron roosting, if that was something that could be considered. I mean, all of these, we are taking notes, and obviously, these can be relayed to their, their team for further discussion. But if you would like to respond, that, that may be helpful at this time for the commission.
Go ahead.
Sure. In response to Barbara's comment about potentially replacing some of those non-native trees long-term, I think I'd be happy to look into with Garrett and Tom and see what can be done about that. It's, it's good to know that she's interested in that. About the diffuser, that's outside of our scope, so I'll let others talk about that if, if needed. Yeah, and, yeah, I think, I think that's all I have.
Yeah, and, you know, I think there was one comment from, that I, that I can answer. You know, there was a discussion around this, the prior, prior proposal on Madera Boulevard for an elliptical sort of roundabout. I think we maybe called it a peanut about at some point, but it looked like that. You know, I think really the goal, some of the goal there was to eliminate some of the dual-left turns and whatnot. And it came out of some of environmental analysis related to traffic and, and safety. At this, at this point, you know, I think what we're looking at, and we'll have to evaluate it further, but the idea of, of, of changing the location of that entrance that they talked about and how to effectively make it a single entrance and exit out of the hotel, aligned with moving pedestrians really through. There were some comments about additional detail, which I think we fully concur is going to be necessary to, to sort of document and diagram exactly how pedestrians would be sort of ushered toward, toward that corner. I think it was an improvement in getting people out onto Tamal Vista itself from the hotel. And then there would only be one real option to get to the intersection. So we're, it's not something that I know staff is looking at now, but it may be something, you know, that gets considered as part of the environmental analysis. I will note that there's been some discussions about the roundabout at the Madera and Tamal Vista Boulevard intersection that have been challenging. And so we're, we're working through, that's sort of first on the priority list and would probably make a great deal of safety improvements there, so.
Yeah, I wondered, you know, where that stood.
I don't, yeah, and I frankly, just to clarify, I'm not certain myself whether, where that stands either. So there's more to come on Madera and Tamal Vista that we'll have to sort of, you know, talk about. But that's, that's largely on the public work side of it, rather than the applicant's, you know, proposal. It would have to be something that our, our traffic engineers in our town public works department would want to see happen. And at this point, I'm, I don't know if that's, you know, on something that we want to pursue, so.
Right, okay. Yeah, it's not really part of the project discussion at this time, but
Correct.
Okay. In Mr. Kenning's summary for us, he pointed out a paragraph, or I'm pointing out a paragraph that he wrote entitled "Discussion." So I'm going to read this before I ask the commissioners to provide some input. And just to summarize, in conducting a preliminary evaluation of the proposed project based on conceptual information, the commission should review the preliminary review application materials, et cetera, et cetera, ask any relevant questions. But the commission should provide direction to the applicant regarding enhancements to the project that should be considered in developing a project application. Areas that potentially develop further generally provide feedback related to the overall direction of the project proposal. Should also consider the specific bonus FAR request of the applicant this time to provide preliminary comments and feedback to the applicant on how the project meets the criteria defined in the hotel FAR bonus orders. And whether it believes the proposed project could obtain the necessary combination of points required to build a project with .58 FKR. So that's the instruction for what we're after tonight. Along with any other commentary that falls within what they presented us.
What, one, and actually, if I may, you just sparked one additional thought that I just wanted to make a, a point that one of the things to note about the actual number, amount of points or additional FAR that they need to obtain, because in fact, they are actually retaining the pond, it actually creates in a scenario where the FAR that they need to obtain is higher than if they would have actually filled a portion of the pond. And so it's, it's just sort of a nuance in how FAR is calculated. But we are, we are eliminating essentially the portion of the site that includes the pond from the area of land of the site. So that essentially the same building that you're seeing here with the pond is .58. But if you actually didn't have the pond on the site, that same building would be .49. So it's, they're still, they're still going for the .58. That's what they're required to do, but I just wanted to make that clarification so you understand just exactly why there need to achieve that extra .24 FAR.
I hope that's clear, yes.
It may not be clear, but anyways, you are on, you're on the right track. I appreciate your recapping of what the commission's, you know, direction that they're, that they should be, you know, trying, the feedback that you should be trying to provide at this time for the applicant's benefit.
Thank you, Adam. All right, so I'm going to start in with commissioners here. Commissioner Bandell, if you have any questions you need a clarification, otherwise I'd like to hear your thoughts about those specifics.
The one question I have, and the, these, these horizontal ledges, are those balconies or are they just ledges?
Hi, this is Rory. The intention is they're ledges, that they're not balconies. There are about four guest rooms facing the courtyard, which will have just unparalleled views of Mount Tam. So I'm quite hoping that we get a couple of balconies there. But no, 140-something of these rooms will not have balconies.
And so how, how deep are those ledges?
The shallow ones are in the sort of four to eight inch range. Just enough for visual relief.
Okay, so they're just decorative is, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. I had one, and, and it is in the public works area, but this, the site of this building is between two really awful exits from the freeway. It's between Lucky Drive, which has always been a horrible exit, and the Court of Madera exit, the way the cars come off of that exit and have to make a decision really fast as to which direction they're going to turn in. Is, I think it's a tough one, and I think at some point that the town has to really get a handle on that, because they're, those are bad. It's bad to have them right there. I have a, an issue also with the, the, these uprights. I understand you need a, an overhang for cars to drive up underneath it, but it does look a little bit like a gas station with those kind of Y. I don't know if they're metal or what they are, those Y uprights. They just strike me as not fitting, fitting in at all. So I wouldn't be able to give the full design points for that. They really just don't seem to fit in. And I think, I don't know if it's the way the picture is or whatever, but the landscaping looks very sparse, too. I don't know. I think it needs I don't know, I think it needs a whole lot more green to kind of soften all those angles. That are in that building. The other thing that I think could have been. That the hotel could do a little more with is the integration with the community. When I, when I looked at the idea that the full pond is going to be there and improvements are going to be made in the pond. I was thinking that there could be maybe a ranger, something like a park ranger or biologist there. Couple times a year and invite school groups to come and learn about what goes on in the in the pond. Or then I use it as a natural resource for education and. And I think that would be a. A good way to invite the public into that area. And I was also wondering about the signage. I see one little sign right there along the boulevard, is there not going to be? Are there, are there not any plans to put a bigger sign or what kind of sign is being planned? I don't know. So those are my initial thoughts on the whole thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Margaret. Commissioner Rizzo, I'd like to hear from you what your thoughts are.
Yes, sir. Well. I did. Did a bit of homework, I think I'm the only commissioner that hasn't been through a few of these meetings, so. I'm 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 very pleased that the pond was addressed. And I think they did a very good job of integrating. Some sort of public integration, but I would like to see it, actually, I I agree with Commissioner Van Dell a little bit. I almost would want to like to see a path that kind of connects Madera and Tamil Vista around the whole property. So it's a little bit more engaging for the public. It seems kind of tucked in there and I don't know if anybody's really going to know about that little parking space in the back there. But I'm really pleased that 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 the the pond was addressed and the community was heard. But all in all, I I just thought. You know, looking at this site, you've got an R one residential district on one side, you've got a regional shopping district district on the other side. You've got an office building and a freeway, a freeway exit. I thought that this proposal was. Was definitely a huge step in the right direction from what was originally proposed, especially how Tamil Vista was treated. With the layering of of landscaping and the breaking up of the facade and actually not having a solid facade on that side. Really helps out as well. As far as the massing, I'd still like the architects to work a little bit on the materials and the massing of the four, the four story. I think there's a vertical element running through the middle of the the four story building. It's probably for H V A C units and. Maybe an elevator. For elevator use, so anything we could do to to bring that mass down, I think, you know, because you're going, you have a huge. A huge mass going horizontal by the freeway that, you know, you will, we will be able to see that from some of our. Our homes up on the hills, so anything we could do to bring that mask down, I think it would really help out in the end. Bringing this across home plate with the community. And I thought, and I just wanted to commend the planning staff and the planning commission before I got there. For working on the the bonus, hotel bonus criteria, because I really think it worked here. From what I could see, it it made, it made the applicant think about how they can integrate some of these. Some of these things that we want to see in these projects, anything from the community in integration to the public realm to. To the site planning and environmental sustainability, which is, I think, really close to everybody's heart here. Sitting on the few commissions that I have. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the architects come up with and the landscape architects and their whole team. Think they put a really good team together and again, thanks to staff for putting together the bonus ordinance that we passed. Because I think it's really working. To benefit a really nice project in the end. So. And and lastly. Really want to try to figure out how we could get this considered a dedicated disaster recovery center. I think it's super important from some of the other committees that I sit on, it it seems that. It comes up all the time, you know, power goes out, we need a battery, people need to charge their phones, people need to charge their cars. This seems like a great location. You know, if there's a fire on our hill, we're kind of in a bowl, we need something in Larkspur, quarter Madera area of this scale. That can handle a lot of different. Situations that come up, so. I want to thank you for hearing my comments and I am looking forward to seeing what comes up in the next presentation.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate that. Commissioner Bundy.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Peter. Great presentation, I really appreciated the detail, it answered a lot of questions that I had. I I would like to echo what James said about the disaster portion that you're not seeking. Because Red Cross doesn't have that. But Court of Madera does have neighborhood response groups, a Court of Madera Larkspur. Disaster plan with a disaster coordinator. And I think working with the existing disaster preparedness groups. Would be able to come up with some additional disaster preparedness. That would benefit the hotel and the guests as well as the community and would potentially give additional points. And I I would like to see you explore that if if you think that's something you would like to do. I'd also like to reiterate the idea that that maybe we should look at this roundabout on Madera. I remember from before thinking that would be traffic calming as well as discouraging individuals from. Trying to cross Madera from the hotel to the town center or vice versa. That that is sort of, that is dangerous, especially with people coming off the freeway at speed. And not having, you know, any calming or awareness of some of the issues. Especially some of those that try to make an abrupt left turn into Chevron. So I I would hope the town would be looking at the pulling that concept back up and looking to see if that would help. And work in regard to public safety and traffic calming. The decision to save the pond, I think, you know, that's good because it was never clear if the regional. Water Quality Board or the Army Corps of Engineers would approve changing that. But what I and I appreciate the the effort to try to make it more environmentally sustainable. As a pond for the benefit of the wildlife and the things you've talked about with the diffuser, especially in water diffuser. That just bubbles up, I I think would be helpful, but you have no circulation. And is, are you looking at a way to get better water circulation, given that the water level currently is tied? To the lagoon one and that level is controlled by D P W for flood protection. In the lagoon itself, not so much in the pond, it's not really needed as flood protection at this point. I know you, I heard you mention that the reclaimed water potentially could be available. There is a reclaimed water line currently going to the Golden Gate Bridge District property from Central Moran Sanitary District. And. Prior to that, I wasn't aware of any reclaimed water being piped into Court of Madera. So that would be great if that could be used to keep the water level, you know, up at basically the normal. Normal level that you see in the summertime and allow for circulation. If that's not a possibility, then potentially the gray water that you're using for the laundry. Or proposing to use for the laundry could then be recycled as second, second degree gray water. Into the pond, just to improve the. The volume of water that's in there. The other, I guess, thought was in regard to the pavement. It sounds like you're doing a rain garden concept with the parking services. But are we, is there also a plan for permeable pavement for the for the driveways and parking areas? So those, those are the primary considerations that I think I had. Yeah. For now, that those are my considerations.
Thank you, Bob. I for myself, I I agree with. The other commissioners and. I agree with the other commissioners that the project has come a long way. Kudos to Garrett and Doug for bringing this team to us. And that I think the the forecast for what this team can produce looks promising. And they clearly have the shots to deal with all the issues here. I think that it, the project is at a stage where it's words and drawings on paper right now. I wish it was a little more certain about some of the measures being considered. Particularly with the photovoltaics and with the gray water. I think those are definite. Issues that we're trying to get new buildings to incorporate, they're very important. And given the the nature of. Solar panels being required on homes now, I think that it would be fortuitous to have that brought to this project. And with those kinds of energy efficiencies and green efforts. The building would really be something to be proud of for Court of Madera and I think it would achieve your point. I I completely understand the difficulty in having a community pool. And I I don't support that, I think that this hotel should remain a hotel. But on the other hand, I think that the incorporation and the invitation to the community to conduct activities there is really important. And would allow the hotel to be a part of. The community and people would be proud of it then. When it comes to some energy, I wondered if there was any plans for a generator on the site. Given the emergency preparedness and so forth. That's probably more planning than you've achieved at this point. But when the power goes down, it can go down for a couple of days or more. If you have one of those P G N E brownouts or in a world of hurt. I appreciate everybody's concern about the Madera Avenue traffic, but I think that that's really a town problem. And the town has to get engaged to work with. Public Works and come up with a plan. And the the entrance and exit of the hotel is in the right place as they placed it, I believe. And that is what the town has to work with. In general, the architecture is. Great in the massing is in the center of the site. I have admired buildings of late that have the massing in the center of their sites because they lose that. Sense of mass that you get when they're closer to the edge of the property, so I think it's a wise decision to do that. And to break it up into the angular formation, so I support the architectural approach. With tweaks and so forth, I think they'll get to a really good building. So. I think that. Sustainability is my most important concern. I heard Mr. Sports talk about many things that you can incorporate. The circadian lighting scheme is definitely coming on. Maybe you can put that into your exterior lighting program. So. Does the applicant want to respond to anything or have any further commentary? Garrett?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Chase. Yeah, I know there are a lot of comments here and I'm still sort of trying to process them all, actually. Let's see. Yeah, I I I actually like a moment to take out of my thoughts, I was just taking a lot of notes. Hey, well, let's go down the list here. I in response to Commissioner Bandell, there was comments about sort of more community integration at the pond. Perhaps sort of sort of park ranger concept. I understand the comment, I I think it's probably not the best setting for that, giving sort of the limited. Environmental activity at the pond, I think there's probably better areas in quarter meter for that type of. Type of activity, but but certainly something we could look into more. About signage as well, yeah, the the signage was not part of the package that we submitted at this point. We would intend to keep the existing highway sign that's currently. Where the quarter midair in is labeled and perhaps some other signage on the building. And that would be something that we need to explore in more detail. Let's see, in terms of Commissioner Rizzo had asked about perhaps enhanced public engagement of the pond from Tamil Vista. It's something we actually talked about with Autobahn, we're we're trying to strike a balance between sort of public engagement and public interaction. And sort of maintaining a sort of a serene wildlife sanctuary. And so those two items are sort of pushing and pulling against each other. We feel that the existing path that we're improving between the highway and the pond is sort of a happy median. But but if you'd like, we could explore that in in some more detail. I know two of the commissioners, Commissioner Rizzo and Bundy both spoke about disaster recovery facility. I wasn't aware of local groups in town and and Commissioner Bundy, that's a good thought, perhaps we can get in touch with them and see if we could provide some assistance in that way. I believe a couple of commissioners asked about permeable paving, that I believe that is a Cal Green tier one requirement, I believe it's twenty percent. So we'll be looking at to that as part of the project. And Commissioner Chase had expressed, I know, an interest in a P V system. Certainly something we are really hoping to do for the project and and while I think I I can't exactly commit one hundred percent to it at this point. I I think we're feeling very good that will, it will be a part of the project. And that's about it at this time.
Makes sense. Adam, your final thoughts on this?
Well, I I just think, you you know, it may be helpful, usually at this point in the in the meeting on the study session or workshop. You know, we try to get some consensus on whether, I think the last one we did was on six forty five Tamil, Tamil Pius. The the three apartment project on Tamil Pius, this is obviously a much more significant project. But nonetheless, I think it's it's important to sort of provide, one, you know, it seems like, and I'm just summarizing. Because trying to get a sense whether there's a nod or or a shake of the heads of of whether or not, you know. Look, there are things to improve here and to work on and to see if they can't be integrated. We've heard a lot of good comments tonight from both the public and commissioners, but the project's heading in the right direction. It looks like it may be able to achieve or could achieve preliminarily again, potentially the the bonus F A R pursuant to the ordinance. And really, the question is, at this point, the next step in the process would be for the applicants to go ahead and go back and start working on all this. And integrate it into an application. Obviously, that doesn't, there there's more that would mean than that application gets reviewed by staff. And then we move through the process and obviously that comes back. Over some time, but it comes back to the planning. over some time, but it comes back to the planning commission in, in a hearing format. And so before that, there, there's likely going to be also environmental documents that would have public review and provide more information for the commission. But I think that's, that would be helpful to get some direction and guidance from the commission at this point, whether that was sort of a, a sort of a green light to move forward in that direction or, you know, and I, from, from what I've heard tonight, it seems like all, none of these things are, is pretty clear, some of the, the direction provided in some of the comments. So it seems to me like those are things that the applicant could work on and work toward understanding where to move. But at the same time, I want to make sure that the commission, you know, is comfortable with that. Because we don't want to, the whole point of this or one of the, the main purposes of tonight's meeting is really to make sure that, you know, we have given sort of a, a direction to the applicant and, and not lead them down a path sort of that isn't going to be a fruitful outcome for the town or for the applicant.
So I'm gonna paraphrase this, make a statement here, and I'm going to check with each of the commissioners. Given that, that they're agreeable to seeing the project move forward based on what that has been presented tonight. Very loose form there. So it is a loose presentation compared to what will have to be generated. This is so preliminary. It's, it's all about general concepts and conforming to the expectations of those point systems. So I think everybody's in that agreement, but Margaret, would you say that's true? Of you?
Yes, I, I, Peter, did we skip Phyllis?
Oh, you're right.
I'm always interested in hearing. I thought I was going to get away with it.
Right. So, excuse me, so we're loose format here. Phyllis, you're chiming in, please.
Well, I agree with the, what has been said by the other members of the commission in general. One thing I was going to ask, looking at this picture on screen now, it was so controversial to have that peanut, as you called it, in the middle of Madera Boulevard. If the landscaping between the entrance and the street where we see almost that row of green triangles or whatever the heck it was supposed to be, if there could be a lot of landscaping which would deter people from trying to walk through it in the middle of the block and force them to angle towards where the exit is.
Yeah.
That would be the only thing. You mentioned, Peter, and I agree, and you and I discussed this with the first iteration of wanting the photovoltaic and gray water usage. I think that's important. And other than that, do you realize that we have met for two hours and about 20 minutes, did discuss the pond and not once was wood and grass brought up? That was very refreshing after all the discussion of that last time around.
They're gonna make it grow. Yes.
I will not comment. I just mentioned it. Other than that, I think we're going in the right direction. I like the idea of the darker building. I think it's more attractive. And I encourage them to continue with on the path they've taken.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Rizzo, would you agree with it?
I would.
Okay, two simple words, I would. And Dr. Bundy, where do you stand?
Green light.
Okay, so, you know, in knowing these commissioners as I do, I think that if there were issues here, they would have spoken up and said, this is a no-go, but I, I think that the consensus is that in general, everybody likes this and it's time to move forward into a more thorough design space.
All right. I think that's very clear and I appreciate, I'm sure the applicant appreciates that and I think with that, we've sort of done our, we've done our, you know, we've done the, the work or the commission has done its work that the set out and the, to do this evening with respect to this item. So appreciate all the effort and energy that the commission put into this tonight.
Well, I would like to thank the group making the presentation for, you know, putting this together and putting it in front of us. I think it was very nice, very well done. And thank you for coming to us with this.
And I just wanted to add that, uh, thank the commission for the thoughtful comments. We certainly will take that back to the team and, and try to incorporate that in the, in our formal application. So thank you for the comments.
All right. So we'll end this element for tonight, and I think that Phyllis would advocate for a quick break here before we move on. All right, so we'll limit this to a 10-minute break. So at 9:29, we will come back. So at this time, we have to take a, excuse me, a vote to continue, I believe.
I think we're 9:29 still, if you want to just go right into it.
Hurry up, Peter, we don't have to.
We don't have to what?
Take a vote.
We don't have to. Oh, well, we've started. So Adam, you, you're gonna do your presentation. So fire away.
No, this is the, this is the planning department team is going to take it away. I get to sit back and enjoy with the rest of you. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it to Tracy to start us off here.
I'll, I'll, I'll start us off, Peter, if that's okay.
Of course, yes, please.
Working on sharing my screen.
Got it.
All righty. Good evening, everyone. Chair Chase and commissioners, thank you for making time to hear and reflect upon several projects that were completed in, in 2020. But before moving on to some photos of those projects, I'd like to quickly cover the number of applications which were approved by the commission in 2020 and which we expect to begin construction this year and beyond. As you can see, over the course of 11 meetings, nearly all of them over the Zoom platform, the commission approved 11 total projects, two ordinances. And in addition to these approved projects, the commission also held three preliminary reviews or, or study sessions in, in 2020 to provide feedback to applicants. On the second page of your staff report, there's a list of all the applications that were heard by the planning commission in, in 2020, if you're interested in some more detail. Coming up here, Phil and Martha are going to share several townwide commercial and residential projects which were approved by the commission in previous years from approximately 2016 up to 2019 and, and have recently completed construction within 2020. And I'll let, I think Phil's gonna start us off. Phil, if you want to just let me know to advance slides, we'd be happy to, happy to do that.
Sure. Thank you, Tracy. Happy New Year, commissioners. Good to see everybody. Been a while. And so starting off is a dog park. You all approved it, or the, the dog park was constructed and is in operation. And from what I hear is, is well-loved and well-used by humans and dogs. In fact, I think the, the grass is kind of taking a pretty good beating. So that's, that's the good and the bad. It means it's a popular place. But that was a, a successful project. And so that's, that's number one. And number two is the town hall project. Obviously not, not approved, not built, but you spent a lot of time on it. We had many, many public hearings and the planning commission had a total of three public hearings, April, June, and October to talk about the town hall project. And it continues to move forward. And at this point, we are scheduled to go before the town council, the second meeting of February, tentatively speaking. So that's that. And then I think the next one's Martha's.
So in this last year, the planning commission considered two ordinances. First was the hotel or area bonus ordinance. I won't go into any detail on that since there's been a, a long conversation on it earlier this evening. The second was the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Now, the commission may recall, there was extensive amendments were made to our ABU ordinance in 2019. And then in 2020, there were some additional amendments that were made to that ordinance specifically. It created allowance for non-claire story windows in instances when they would be required through a review of a discretionary design review permit. And it also required that any accessory dwelling unit in Christmas Tree Hill that was created from existing floor space or JDU that it needed to, could only be allowed if there was room within the existing capacity districts on Christmas Tree Hill. Next slide.
I have, Phil, take us a few, through a few residential projects that were completed in 2020.
All right, residential projects completed in 2020. I've got four of them. Four, or four I'm going to talk about and five. I would say good thing, all of them, none of them were appealed. And all of them, I think, went fairly smoothly. There was some controversy with some of them. I'm starting out 502 Chapman. And that looked, looked like this before. There's actually, the building is to the left, but this is what the story poles look like. And after they were all done, it looks like this. Not the, I, the, the side views are a little bit better, but it is a handsome garage. And, and it is overall a, a, a nice project and turned out quite well, I think. So that's 502 Chapman, just downstream of the big controversial, the 512.
516?
What's that?
516, I think.
516, thank you. The one where, while, we're all, all, the eucalyptus trees went away. But this one not nearly as controversial and turned out quite nice. 3,215 square feet. Next is 38 Lakeside. Quite a dramatic change for, you know, relatively standard home in the flatlands of West Corder Madera. Had a very concerned neighbor to the left that we worked with intently for quite a long time. All the way through the, the final approval, the final certificate of occupancy. Quite a dramatic house and turned out like this. They, what, probably one of the, one of the few houses I think that you've seen that was elevated for the FEMA lift. So as you can see, they used to climb up two steps to get the front door and now they climb up about six. So big, big lift to keep it out of the floodplain. Which, and, you know, a major, obviously a major remodel and a little over 1,000 square foot addition. Quite, quite a modern home and, and, and I think turned out, turned out nicely. And the next one is, I'll give credit to the owner for this photograph. Quite a nice shot. Didn't include his boat. I'm not sure why, because he does have quite a nice boat. But this was the much-talked-about Paradise Drive residential dock just east of Marin Montessori School. Had, had many conversations with, with the neighbors concerning this. Worked out, worked out fine in the end. Have not heard anything from the neighbors since it's been constructed. And quite a unique project. I think this is not, and can't think of any, any other residential docks that came before a planning commission in the, in the recent past. And I think that may be it. It's for me. Now we're going back to Martha.
Okay, another project that was completed this year was a, an addition and remodel at 11 Madrono. This shows to the before pictures. It was a, a two-story home. And the next slide, the project included a remodel and an addition just over 1,900 square feet. There were additions, modest additions to the existing first and second floor and then a new third story that I believe was just over 1,200 square feet. And the next one is Eight Taylor Lane. It's a, was a fairly modest house, just out under 1,000 square feet on a relatively small lot. And the applicant did an addition, next slide, Tracy, to both the, both the lower and the upper level. It was the addition was about just over 680 square feet. It's not too visible from the street what the, the additions are, but you can kind of see them. They're, they're in white on both sides of that, kind of the, the main component you see from the street. You can see the additions. They also, the project also included a, a parking variance and then a variance to encroach further into the rear yard setback. Next slide, and I think okay, so we're now go over a couple of commercial projects. And the first is the new Amy's Drive-Thru Restaurant, which opened in August of this year. This was obviously the, the former, former Denny's restaurant, which was demolished. As part of the project, the commission approved a zoning ordinance amendment to allow drive-through facilities as a conditional use in the C3 zoning district. And the project included a new restaurant, just over 4,000 square feet. There are also obviously site improvements, including a new parking lot, a drive-through facility, landscaping throughout, and there were also several green features that were made, including a, a green roof, which you can see on the picture on the right. Also, there were solar panels on both the roof of the building and also the trash enclosure and then some electric charging stations as well. And, and this restaurant obviously opened in the midst of a pandemic and they, they've been successful. And I think that can be partially attributed to the fact that they have a drive-thru restaurant and they've been able to serve customers despite the fact that they haven't been able to open inside of the restaurant yet. And next slide says The Lazy Boy, 801 Tamil Pious. It was a, a facade remodel to an existing store that was previously, previously the Home Consignment Center. And the project included an entry element on that front elevation and then the removal of some trellis features from two of the elevations and then new signage. And it also included landscaping along the perimeter of the site. And they opened, I believe it was in early October they opened. Next slide. Now I'll turn it back over to Phil.
And definitely one of the, the big, the big projects. Definitely one of the, the big projects completed and open, partially, partially opened in 2020 is Restoration Hardware. The new 46,000 square foot gallery and rooftop restaurant, I think, more than cafe. Quite a huge project, obviously a, a ton of staff time, a ton of consultants' time, a lot of commissioners' time and a lot of town council time. However, I would point out that being such a large project that got, had an environmental impact report went formally to the planning commission just once and went formally to the town council just once. Which I think it goes credit to, to the consultants, to the applicant, to the commission and council and to all, all staff involved. Quite a, quite a big project, you know, zoning amendment, lot line adjustments, I guess, EIR. Also included the, the northern lot, you know, the gravel lot being converted into the former lot. And which was kind of fun, got to be christened with drive-in movies, which I don't think any of us expected. So that was kind of a, a fun way for the northern lot to get somewhat initiated. But again, Restoration Hardware, huge, huge, successful project. And I look forward to going to using the rest, using the restaurant one of these days when they can open up. Next, just across the parking lot, the Village Center Court. Or not, a little ways across the parking lot. The Village Center Court was completely redone. Major project, which was once, you know, way back in the day, we had that large tower. And then we had just a sea of, of concrete. Now we have no tower. We have a lot more landscaping. We have seating. We have the, the improved fountain. Fountain was always there, but upgraded fountain. And I think just a much better. And I think just a much better. Experience for the shoppers to, to hang out in. And next, jumping east to the East Court. Which is just, just in front of Restoration Hardware. Another, you know, common area improvement. Again, this was a hundred percent pretty much concrete, I don't have a before shot. And now, again, amenities of seating, plants, trellises, fountains. And again, a much more pleasant space and I think blends in well with, with the Restoration Hardware building. And next, sticking with the village, village has been a, a popular place. We had a freeway oriented signs and paint job for the west side of the village. Went from the, the kind of tannish, greenish colors to more of a blue and grays. So the, there's complete painting of that area, landscape upgrade of the whole area. And then also the signs themselves. The applicants really wanted, as you probably all remember, the, the signs were quite restrictive. I guess to say that the requirements for sign, you know, on certain height, certain font, certain colors, not a lot of variety. Ever since I've been here, the village has been wanting those signs to have a little bit more variety and, and to, you know, replicate the particular stores. So that ordinance is, that revised design guidelines for signs have been in operation for many, many months. Oddly enough, not a lot of the businesses have taken advantage of that. Charles Swabs is one of the few that has really said, okay, we want a totally different font. And has gone that way. There, there are a couple of other ones that use different colors. And the Peloton and, and Warberry Parker are a little bit different. But, but I imagine over time, we're going to see even more variety of signs along the west side of the village. And. That, I think that's all it, isn't it Tracy and Martha? But I just, yeah, I'd just like to say then a, a lot of great projects, a lot of hard work by everyone. And it's been a pleasure to, to shepherd the, all these through the process.
And I, I would just add one, one more quick thing on, given that it was 2020 and, and. You know, the world's been turned upside down a little bit. One of the things as well that we've been working hard on and Martha in particular has been working with businesses on outdoor dining. And temporary use permits. Some of, some of the things that have come, come through and been really administered by the planning department, although you may not. Obviously those, those didn't come before the commission, but I think it's important just to recognize that a lot of time went into. Making sure that folks could expand out onto the, you know, outdoor dining, there was Mankie Park Tables and Chairs. Things like the, the drive-in movie theater. Over at the north parking lot and so on. But I also just wanted to thank, you know, everybody. The commissioners for, you know, not missing a beat really, moving on to the Zoom platform. Everyone kind of figuring it out as we all went along. Staff included and, and, you know, I think in general, our community has come along and been able to have participated as well. Not ideal, obviously, but, but nonetheless, I think. As shown by tonight, I think we got, people are, are able to participate still on these platforms and. Communicate their comments and ideas and thoughts and, and still have productive meetings, so. That's my only comment on this and I want to thank staff for putting this together, so thank you.
Thank you to the commissioners for your hard work.
Thank you guys, I do have a question about that and approximately how many total building permits were issued this year?
Well.
Eight hundred and fourteen.
There you go Tracy, that's an all-time, actually that is, as far as we know, an all-time record. For Corde Madera in terms of the number of permits. I think last year, 2019 calendar year, it was more like seven fifty around there or something like that. So 2020, despite the, the, you know, a lot of things going quiet and shutting down. Business-wise certainly was not from the standpoint of constructing, you know, low construction projects. Lot of those were residential rehabs and, and maybe smaller, smaller items. But people took advantage of, I guess, staying at home to get a lot of work done around the house. So that's why I think we have a lot of very high volume of building permits issued this year.
Makes absolute sense, yeah. So we're on to a new year and we don't know what's coming.
Vaccines, we hope.
Yeah. Hook us up Bob.
Well. I must say that the last time that I viewed a council meeting, I can't remember that I was, you know. Reporting on it, so Adam, you've been in attendance of every damn meeting. Now who can report on a meeting that they were supposed to report on?
Oh, I can, I went to the, I listened. To the town council on December fifteenth. And I have to say I listened for more than four hours, so I think I should be excused from the next time. It wa, it was a very long meeting. I think it started whenever they start at six thirty and it went to like eleven o'clock at night. There was a lot of, at the beginning, I, I never had seen so many public comments. The danger, about the dangers of secondhand smoke. And it was mostly a youth group. That basically got up and was very, very adamant about, they wanted to see a. A hundred percent smoke-free policy in new, in new and, in new apartment complexes and nearly new. Multi-unit housing. And that included cannabis smoke too. So they were very vocal. And Todd Cusmano actually responded at the time saying that currently. Corde Madera has some restrictions and bans and we're in line with other jurisdictions. As far as how secondhand smoke is handled in multi-unit places. Then there was a very, very interesting but fast presentation from the Parks and Rec Department. And they really have done a lot of impressive things this year. One, and I have pages of notes of the things that they had done. But one of the things that's very, very, that they really stepped up on this year was communication. And especially through social media and engaging the community, which was really impressive. And they also have, another interesting thing is they had an involving project going. In the Town Park Plaza. Which seems to be more and more getting more and more attention. Then there was a report on the community, the Climate Action Plan, which needed approval. It was an update, the initial approval had been given in 2018 and this was an overview and an update. The basis of it is basically to reduce greenhouse, get greenhouse gases in Corde Madera. Then, as opposed to the Climate Action Plan. There was a very long presentation of the Climate Adaptation Plan. Which, I don't know how many, how much. Information you want about that. Want to hear a lot about it or just a little? There are four goals in climate adaptation. Oh, Phyllis, are your cats leaving?
Well, the other guy had his kids, I have my cats, what can I say?
The, the Climate Adaptation Plan looked at. Three different areas, hillsides, hillsides, the central areas of Port of Madera and the shoreline area. There was a lot of discussion about. The hillside area and burying the P G and E lines, which. The numbers that were thrown around for the cost of a project like that were phenomenal. I don't know how, it was like sixty million dollars or something like, it was just a huge, huge number. And. PG and E isn't really receptive to doing that, put it that way. But there were other things that the town was doing like. To mitigate fire danger and to provide for better. Access and ways for people to leave the hillside in, in case of a disaster. But the main problem on the hillsides is people saw what were the wildfire danger. And improving the transportation networks up and down the hillsides. And there were again, multiple, very, a lot of public comments about that because they divided. It into three stages and people could comment after each stage of the adaptation plan. The shoreline strategies dealt basically with sea, sea level rise and coastal flooding. And there were different. Projects that are being worked on. One is a coastal overlay resilience zone. Which would set out requirements for buildings in the zone and talk about floor level elevations. And they're talking about doing an inventory of all the buildings. And the floor levels of all the different buildings in Corde Madera to see if they're going to have a problem during flooding. It was also a project on Paradise Drive to supplement the existing. Supplementing the existing Safe Roots Project. And talking about documenting king tides for public education. And that went on for, for a long time. And. I could go on some more, but that's a lot.
That is quite a bit and I don't know how they did it all, but thank you, Margaret. As I say, does anybody else have a meeting that they can report on that we didn't? It's been so long since we've met.
There haven't been very many, many meetings and the last one that I was to monitor was canceled.
Right. Adam, is there anything else that you would want to add to any of this meeting look back?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile just making the point. And I thank you Commissioner Bendel for, for going over that item, because I think it is an important item. The Climate Adaptation Plan, it, it will be something that the commission sees and that we will talk about as a group. There are a lot of things in there that I think I've been involved in from the policy side. There's been, that will affect ultimately. Private property and, and maybe we'll get into zoning regulations and thinking about this overlay zone, which is sort of highlighted as sort of a concept. That potentially we want to pursue in the future. And so we will get into that, but I want to be clear because I think there's some confusion out there. I mean, this is a planning level document, there are a host of. Potential policies that are in the plan that are intended to really guide. Strategies for the town to consider as, really to try to tackle these, the, the serious issues of sea level rise and. And wildfire threats and other risks that we're going to see more of as climate changes in the future. So I, 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 I think the time, there are a couple of workshops coming up, you're welcome to attend them. You know, of, I think it's February third and fourth, I want to say. One focused on the, the east side and one focused on the, the west side of town. Sort of more of a breaking it into fire risk and breaking into coastal sea level rise risk. Please pay attention to those, you know, we have had a planning commissioner as part of the, the. Advisory Committee throughout the process, which has been meeting regularly as part of a group of eighteen or. Twenty folks to sort of provide technical input into the plan. So, you know, it's, we midstream, I think that went from Charles to Jim is that, if I'm remembering correctly. So, you know, there, there, there had, there was a meeting that be, I believe in October. I can't remember the exact date of the last one, but in, nonetheless, I think the point I'm trying to make is. It will be, as you all are very familiar with, these planning, whether it's the general plan, whether it's zoning code, you know, in a sense, these are. The zoning ordinance is even more codified, this is going to be a planning level document, it's a living document, changes, nothing is sort of. Sort, nothing, the document isn't saying this is going to happen and there's no ifs, ands or buts about it and this is the policy of the town. And so there have been some concerns raised about. You know, on the infrastructure side, are we putting a wall in the back of people's yards over on, in Mariner Cove? And the, 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 the answer to that is, is, is no, not at this time. We do need to consider solutions to the problem though, and this is one of the solutions that we. Need to start thinking about seriously and, and, and we should start. Taking the next step, which is just more analysis and study to see if that's actually the right thing to do. And so a lot of those larger concepts are somewhat scary and somewhat, and very costly. But if we don't start actually putting in place some of the initial work. Again, most of it is like getting more information, studies, analyses. We're never going to get to the point where we can actually. Act on some of these items that we may really need to do. And so I just want to make sure you're going to hear a lot about this. Through the, the council and some of these workshops over the next month or two. That, that it's going to be before the town council, likely in March for adoption. But again, once it's adopted, what my plan would be is to come back to you. You know, sort of lay it out for you and, and tell you what's in it and then. Really talk about. Immediate, immediate actions that we may want to take from a, from a, more from a planning. Commission side, which may be more related to zoning actions and whatnot that are in the plan. And start to talk about prioritizing and putting them into our work plan over the next several years in some logical order. So anyways, I, that's just an overview as you start to think about what's in there. And again, just so you know, the plan is organized, it lays out the problem and then it highlights some of the larger strategies. And that's really, and, and what it would take to implement those. But it doesn't say this is the policy of the town that we are going to do this next, you know, for example. There's a, there's a, I, I went through hundreds of strategies that we, with the consultants that are actually in the library of strategies. So we can, that, those will be part of the plan as well and we can, you know, pick and choose which ones as we go forward. Make the most sense from a timing perspective. So anyways, it's kind of long-winded there at this late hour. But I thought it was important just to share that with you. And I will say, I gave an update on Project Home Key earlier today as well at the community chat. I won't get into that, but we have a, our, our working group is up and running. And four community residents are on that working group along with county representatives. Catholic charities, who's going to be running that. We do expect likely some residents to start to occupy the, the facility in the next. Two to three weeks, I would, as, as our best guess at this point. Still some final building. Corrections need to be done out of the site, but it's getting there. Corrections need to be done out of the site, but it's getting there. So. Still a lot, yeah, there's a lot of activity for sure that is. Touching on things that we all deal with in our normal. Work as the planning commission and planning staff, but not directly before you, so it's. Good to just, these things that can gently. Or going on. That that may touch the planning commission in the near future, so. And I'm happy to provide any other updates, but I'll I'll leave it there for now. Other other than to say we don't actually have. Any other items ready for the next planning commission meeting at this point, so. That's that's where things stand.
Quite a summary, Adam. It kind of sounds like the Climate Action Plan is an iceberg in the water up ahead.
Yeah, and it's a good, yes, there's a lot of work sort of that will. In a sense, like a general plan, you know, that. Gets sort of flows from it, so in that sense, yes, the iceberg analogy, the. Pieces will be breaking off from it and we'll be, we'll be trying to hold on to those and.
We'll leave it at that, yeah. Analogy, so you know, we don't have any meeting minutes to approve or anything else, so. Yeah, Bob.
I had just a comment that. I would encourage all the commissioners to listen to those two presentations, one on the sea level rise flooding and one on the wildfires. The, in particular, the people on Christmas Tree Hill wanted to have underground power because that would reduce the cost, the the risk of fire. But, you know, I've wanted to have that in my neighborhood for years, but I couldn't get the rest of the neighbors to want to pay for it and. They hadn't really talked about how they would pay for that. And there's a big issue in Mariner Cove about, you know, this wall and. Some misunderstandings about what the height of this wall is and and how high it would have to be to start off with, but. For Adam, I don't see, you know, anything really coming to us, you know, until there's actually a proposal out there. These are just. Programs to approve, but there's there's nothing that that's going to be out there for us in the foreseeable future, so. I would just encourage the other commissioners to tune into these.
Good advice.
I got a question there, is there another meeting of the odds? Coming up?
Martha, you want to take that one?
Yeah, we're planning to meet with the the working group towards the end of the month and then. Be coming to the commission for an update on that project, probably the end of February. There are definitely, there's going to be a lot of kind of work picking up in the next couple of months on that project, so you will definitely all be hearing about it.
Yeah, forgot to update, that's actually most immediate in in terms of planning commission, yeah, that's a good good reminder. We're getting the draft. Toolkit, which was the product of the odds group, is is due out the first week in February, so. We'd like to come to the commission and present that at the end of February. And and the other, actually, one last thing. We did get our draft Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers from A BAG, so. Just to put that out on your on your radar that the planning, you know, we will be required to be planning for the development of. At least zoning for and and. Development of seven hundred and twenty five units of housing over the next eight years. Over a wide variety, you know, it's broken. There's a large percentage of that is very low and low income housing. And so just just be aware, there's lots more to come on that, but that's. I don't, you know, I frankly don't want to focus on the number, I would like not to focus on the number, but since it's out there, you should be aware of that. My, you know, frankly, I would like to come to you and and to our community and talk about just housing, where we can actually develop housing. In a productive way, but and we'll do that, but the number is going to be focused on, I'm sure, so. You should be, you should be aware of it.
That's a lot of ADUs, Adam.
Yeah. Thanks. Working on it, working on it. All right, thanks.
With that said, let's declare this meeting over with and let's adjourn, so thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.